There it is. Okay, welcome to those that have joined us here in council chambers this evening, as well as those that are joining us from home. This is the regular session meeting of Pecoson City Council for Tuesday, November the 12th. I'll call this meeting to order and ask if you could all please rise and join me in the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and thank you for the many blessings we've received in our city. As we approach this Thanksgiving holiday, we ask that time with our families be a priority and that we all look out for each other as the Thanksgiving season comes on. And then as we approach Christmas, we ask for the safety of our citizens and those in our public safety departments. As we look forward and realize the reason that we are all able to gather here this evening is because of our men and women who serve in the armed forces, please bless them and those and their families as they protect all of us here and within our city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I've asked for one special presentation this evening, and I'm hoping that we had a work session just prior and we didn't break down. But if I could, Mike, do you want to introduce Dr. Coons or you want to join me at the podium? Just one over here. And Dr. Dever, if you could join us. A couple of years back, I had the privilege of meeting with Dr. Dever at a time when I felt like Thomas Nelson, and I still feel like Thomas Nelson, is doing great things on the Virginia Peninsula. And it was due to his leadership in making every, all the programs that they have there work, as well as expanding that campus into the Williamsburg area. And I will tell you, I'm just a huge fan of it, both from the city of Pecoson, but I'm also a fan of it from an employer at Newport News, where we count on their services to provide a workforce for us. So, Dr. Dever has decided that this is the time for him to step aside, and we wanted to honor him. And this proclamation is in recognition and honor of Dr. John T. Dever, President of the Thomas Nelson Community College. And whereas Dr. John T. Dever became Thomas Nelson Community College's eighth president on October 1st, 2011, with the career of over forty years as an educator and administrator, and whereas Dr. John T. Dever received his bachelor's degree in history from, and I may slaughter this, Baller Mean College. Good. All right. A master's degree in English from the University of Kentucky and a PhD in English from the University of Virginia. And whereas John T. Dever served his community by his participation on the boards for the Peninsula Council for Workforce Development, WHRO, the Virginia Tidewater Consortium for Higher Education, and Riverside Lifelong Health and Greater Peninsula Now. And whereas John T. Dever has pursued research and has been involved in major products dealing with the community college transfers, diversity and inclusion, general education, workforce development, developmental education, strategic planning, organizational and leadership and distance learning, we, the city of Pecoson, wish him well for his retirement and for as many years of service. Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, thank you, sir. Thanks, anyway. I should introduce Mr. Mike Coons. He's the President of the Board.
Chair of the College Board. Mayor Hunt, council members, Manager Wheeler, this is a true pleasure to recognize Dr. John Dever. You've heard his credentials. There are a few things to know, though, that Dr. Dever is a Shakespeare scholar from Kentucky. I'm not sure how that fits, but it works well. He's been an educator for over forty years, began his first twenty years at Thomas Nelson, and then progressed through numerous colleges, four colleges, in Virginia Community College System, Thomas Nelson, Tidewater, Blue Ridge, and Northern Virginia. And throughout his career, he maintained his family and his home in Newport News. We've, he's headed up our five-year plan, Focus 2020, really strengthen the efforts in dual enrollment, partnerships with the Peninsula community, and our capacity for excellence. Some of the noteworthy programs are our early college program in concert with Newport News Schools, which is truly an amazing program, expanded dual enrollment with Hampton Academies, and articulation agreements, which is really one of the big advantages of community colleges, our two-plus-two program. And Dr. Dever has pursued those agreements with ODU, CNU, Virginia Wesleyan, and the University of Virginia, in addition to putting forth the Fast Forward Program, which is the governor's big program for credentials and industrial certifications, the working, the adult working workforce, and shortening the skill gaps between the workforce and the employer's needs. Dr. Dever oversaw the reaccreditation of the college by the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges, which is a really big deal. And it's been amazing, and developed the plans now for our replacement buildings, the three original buildings at the college will be replaced in the coming years, through appropriations through the general something have been made, and they're on top priority with VCCS. So, you've heard of his engagement in the community, and we truly will miss Dr. Dever, but I will tell you, retirement rocks. So, you're really going to enjoy it. So, thank you very much, and thank you much to the city of Pecoson for recognizing not only Dr. Dever's efforts, but also the value of the community college system. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan, can you come up for a second? I want to be remiss if I didn't recognize Alan Melton. He's our city of Pecoson representative to the Thomas Nelson Community College Board.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Mayor Hunt, members of City Council, and Manager Wheeler, I do appreciate you asking me here tonight to talk about my time as a representing representative from Pecoson. I can report to you that I've attended all the board meetings in the last two years, except for one I do believe I missed. I was on travel for Newport Ship Building. I've attended a lot of the events, and I know that I was challenged by Everett Jordan to get involved, if I was going to be his replacement, to get down there and get involved. So, I've been at a lot of social events, the graduations, Veterans Day events. I have attended several plays and other activities at the college, all very well-received, all very good. I will happy to report, my son Daniel will finish his degree there this December. And as for Newport Ship Building and the Apprentice School, and the Apprentice School and Newport Ship Building has a wonderful relationship with Thomas Nelson, and we continue to work with that partnership pretty well. I can report to you, while Dr. Dever's time, during his time under Everett Jordan and myself, that fourteen-hundred-and-sixty-four Pecoson residents have attended Thomas Nelson. Out of that time, we've had two-hundred-and-twenty graduates from Pecoson. And in addition to that, we had three-hundred-and-fourteen other Pecoson residents take classes at Thomas Nelson. Dr. Dever's made significant improvements with our graduation rate. That is a rate that is graduating with a two-year degree after three years, and that's where a lot of colleges kind of rule, you know, kind of look at themselves, and he's increased that rate significantly. And during his time, we've had twenty new academic programs and career offerings that have been developed at Thomas Nelson. So, we are busy over there, he has been very busy over there, and I think the only thing that hasn't been reported tonight is I hear that our new sign on sixty-four is actually up and running. So...
If you haven't been there, drive along and see it. It's nice, really nice.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Chair Coons, Board Member Melton, council members, thank you so much for this recognition. It means a great deal to me. During my years as president, I took the charge, kind of like Everett Jordan gave to Allen. Get involved, get with your community. A community college can't sit there by itself. It has to be connected and partnering with our localities, with our employers, with our school systems, with our universities, with our legislative delegation. And I took that charge on very, very seriously, and I believe no city or county has played a stronger role in receiving us and accepting the role of the college than the city of Pecoson. So, I thank you so much for your support during these years. It's been a great privilege and honor, and I thank you so much for this recognition that you've given me.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. So, let's see. That concludes the special presentation. So, now is time for Audience for Visitors, and this is a time to address council on any issue. I only saw one sign up for a discussion, and that would be Mr. Bob Weston.
My name is Bob Weston, thirty-four Pecoson River Drive. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me, members of City Council and Manager Wheeler. I'm here to express my concern about the stormwater management facilities that are currently in the revised site plan for legacy development. The reason I've come here is because there have been a new combination of factors over what I had presented in the past that show my concern in terms of the inadequate size that I believe now exists for the stormwater management facilities. And they center around two factors. One is the level of rain that is being designed for in the current facilities and how they are mandated by current city ordinance. And the other is which parts of the development are being included within that analysis. The first one has to do with the city ordinance for the amount of rain that needs to be considered in the design. And the current ordinance calls for a ten-year storm event to be accepted and held for thirty hours after the initiation of the storm, and the relation that that has to the two-year storm event that appears to be currently the foundation for the analysis within the legacy development. The development that is being done now for the revised plant doesn't include development of the areas for the apartments or for the commercial areas, but is primarily the single-family and the townhouse areas. And the analysis that I read in the presentation, or in the documents provided, was that it would satisfy the two-year storm event without exceeding the time limit. However, the ordinance is for a ten-year storm event, which has more than fifty percent more rain falling within that time period than is currently used in the analysis. So, that is a considerable factor in the undersizing of the system. The other point is which parts of the land are being developed. The degree of impermeability of the existing soil as it's undeveloped versus what occurs when it's developed is substantial. This is a very high-density development, and as such, there's a lot more storm water per acre than there is in most of the rest of Pecoson. In fact, I'd say all the rest of Pecoson because of its very high density. Lot of impermeable surfaces, roofs, roads, alleys, sidewalks, et cetera. And when you include the apartment area, it's even a higher degree of impermeability as is the commercial area. So, when you don't include those in the analysis, that can make a significant effect on the impact on the stormwater management facility. And in August of 2015, in fact, I believe it was August 12th, 2015, the proffers by the developer said that, and I'll actually read it, "Prior to the issue of any residential certificates of occupancy, the following improvements shall be constructed." And part three under that has to do with stormwater. Stormwater management facilities shall be constructed sufficient to serve the commercial sites, the apartment site, and the first phase of the single-family and townhome lots. So, the entire area, as it's developed, which means highly impermeable, needs to be included in the analysis. And I think when that is done, plus use the higher amount of rainwater in a ten-year storm event, leads to the requirement for stormwater management facilities more than twice the size that they are now. And that has an impact on the design because it would change the layout, and that also has an impact on the buffers that you'll be considering later. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right. I have another card up here for Audience for Visitors. Kristy McCarley, are you here to just talk about the development, or do you want to speak at Audience for Visitors?
I want to do audience for visitors as well.
Okay.
Do I have to press any button or anything? Okay. I'm Kristy McCarley. I live at one-ten Trace Trail, Tab. I live, my road ends where Big Woods starts, and we have a big drainage ditch behind us. I can't tell from these maps what happens to the V dot drainage ditch. During Floyd, our whole street flooded and our yards, and we're not in a flood plain. So, I would just like to know what are the plans for that drainage ditch?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Ma'am, excuse me. Where did you live?
I live on Trace Trail in Tab.
Oh, okay.
Woods of Tab. So, I end right at the Big Woods.
Good evening. I'm Randy Trust Trail. I live at two-twelve Beach Row, Pecoson. I just want to echo my concerns about the stormwater management plan that's in process right now. And to kind of let the public know that, about the process, you know, it has to be verified by the city engineer, and there's some back and forth and some real concern. I know that Bob is looking at it. He's a former engineer, and his concern about the systems being undersized is something that I wanted to stress because when you approve these buffers or disapprove these buffers, I think you can remember that it's likely that there might have to be some redesigning going on anyway if the systems are inadequate. So, I mean, you can disapprove these buffers and ask them to go back to the drawing board and redesign their system. I also want to make people aware that because the city attorney has written an opinion about the RPA on Oxford Run, there is no RPA on Oxford Run now. He wrote an opinion and quoted an area in the law. So, right now, there's no, really no protection. There would normally be a setback on X Oxford Run, and there's no protection for that right now. So, that opinion is an opinion, and it could be challenged, and that would cause another redesign of the project as well. So, you have a few things going on here. You have inadequate stormwater management, and you have a question of whether you really need an RPA in Oxford Run. So, I think that that opinion could be challenged, and I think you should keep that in mind as you're making these decisions.
Okay. All right. Any, that's it for Audience for Visitors. Council, I'll ask you for approval of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of our regular session of October 28th, 2019.
Suck. Okay, motion made. Second, we approve those minutes. Questions or comments on those? Seeing none, Evie, please.
Certainly. Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven-zero.
Okay. And the work session of the same night?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of our work session of the same night.
Suck. Motion made. Second, we approve those also. Questions or comments? Seeing none, Evie, please.
Certainly. Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven-zero.
Okay. And the work session of the same night?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of our work session of the same night.
Suck. Motion made. Second, we approve those also. Questions or comments? Seeing none, Evie, please.
Certainly. Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven-zero.
Okay. So, now we're at Section F of the agenda. This is the public hearings. There's a series of one, two, three, four, five public hearings. We're going to take them one at a time. I'm going to, we just did a work session, so I'm going to ask that the staff presentation be somewhat shortened. Any information that is needed from that can be garnered by just reviewing that tape. And then we'll ask for just a brief introduction. I'll allow the applicant to speak, followed by the Planning Commission, I mean, the public speakers that have signed up, and then that'll be it, and we'll vote on each one of these individually. That'll be the process. All right. So, the first item is a consideration of the following items requested by the Big Woods Development Company regarding the legacy development, planned-use development, tax map parcels, a series of them, and this is mixed use. And the first item here is a request for a proffer amendment to change the timeline in which the community clubhouse and pool must be constructed from prior to the eightieth single-family to prior to the hundred-and-forty-seventh single-family and/or townhome building permit. Phase one contains a hundred-and-forty-six townhomes and a single-family homes. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, if I could note for the council again and for the public that earlier today we received a written request to modify this proposed proffer amendment to make it such that it would not be at the prior to the one-hundred-and-forty-seventh, but it's prior to the one-hundred-and-twentieth. So, it would be appropriate for council to consider that reduction in the amount of the change.
Yep. All right. Do you want to do, do you want, Wally, do a brief introduction, or?
Certainly can.
Good evening again. I'm not going to say too much, except that we looked over the proffer amendment. As the city manager just said, it's been amended somewhat today with the letter. I'll be happy to take any questions, but essentially, we covered it at the work session. And I'll leave it at that.
Wally?
Mr. Mayor, would you just restate the Planning Commission's recommendation on this?
Yes, I'd be glad to. The Planning Commission voted four to two to recommend approval to the city council on this request.
Okay. Thank you. And so, the applicant?
Do you want to open the public hearing?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this point. But the applicant, I want you to be there for telling us what it is that you're trying to do. All right?
Good evening, Mayor Hunt, members of council. My name is Lamont Myers. I'm manager of the Big Woods Development Company. I'm here tonight with members of our team who are also available to answer any questions, Buddy Spencer, whom you all know, is also the manager and principal of Big Woods Development Company, Conway Shield, who's our corporate attorney, Ryan Stevenson, who is our project engineer and who can address issues like stormwater management, for example, and Julie Steele, where, there she is, with the Environmental Specialties Group, who is our environmental consultant and permitting consultant on the project. Before I start, I would like to just thank the council for your leadership on this project. This goes back about six years to bring all these owners in the Big Woods together. We really want to thank the council for their leadership. We want to thank the staff for their ongoing assistance in as we work to build a project that we believe really, truly will be a legacy for the city of Pecoson. I'd also like to publicly thank the landowners that we have worked with, nineteen different parcels over the last six years. The owner of these properties, many of which had multiple owners, they worked patiently with us, stayed with us through over six years, and to bring us to the point where we are today. We have now purchased all of the land except for one parcel that we are in the middle of working on, and that's just a detail, appraisal detail. But we have now have, at this point, several million dollars invested in this project. So, our commitment has not wavered through all of our travails on this. As you're aware, it took us over three years from city council approval of the legacy project and the master plan to work through our environmental permitting and the subsequent legal challenge that delayed our ability to proceed with detailed construction drawings. These delays and legal challenges have resulted, of course, in unexpected, considerable unexpected costs. In the meantime, site construction costs have, in general, have increased considerably from where they were when the project was approved in 2015. Those cost increases really necessitated for us a long, hard look at how we phase and how we build this project. Our original request, as you know, was to modify the timeframe in which we would complete the community clubhouse and the pool. It was predicated on our need to realize as much sales revenue as possible from phase one in order to proceed with construction of the clubhouse and the pool. It's not just an issue of funding those, the construction of those improvements. In order for us to build the clubhouse and the pool, we will move into phase two of the project, which means we have to then pay all of the mitigation for phase two upfront, which is over a million dollars. We will need to build this portion of Legacy Boulevard, which is single-fronted most of the way, so twice as expensive on a per-lot basis to give back to it, and then, of course, the pool, the clubhouse itself, which is, will be somewhere in the neighborhood of a million dollars as well. So, this is a very expensive process to move into that, and for that reason, we had originally requested that the timeframe in which to build that be moved out from our eightieth building permit, single-family or townhome building permit, to the hundred-and-forty-seventh, which would be after phase one was completed. However, during deliberations with the Planning Commission, there were some concerns expressed by the public and by some members of the Planning Commission that, well, how do we know phase two will ever be built? Now, we stated then, and I'll reiterate tonight, that if we don't ever build anything other than phase one, we're going to lose a whole lot of money. So, that's not something that we can do. We have to build the whole project in order for it to be financially feasible. That having been said, we did indicate at the Planning Commission meeting that as a practical matter, we would have to start construction on the pool and the clubhouse while we were in phase one, because otherwise, if we waited till phase one was completely developed and then we started construction, we would have a loss of perhaps a year where we would lose all of our sales momentum. And that, obviously, is something we don't want to do or wouldn't do. So, in order to confirm our commitment to completion of these community facilities and to address those questions that were raised by the Planning Commission, we did submit today, as Mr. Wheeler indicated, a modification for our request to revise that timeline, to pull it closer to where we would then commit to having the pool and clubhouse completed by the hundred-and-twentieth single-family or town, prior to the hundred-and-twentieth single-family or townhome building permit. That modification will ensure that the clubhouse and pool are started well before completion of phase one, while still providing us time to realize additional sales revenues from, to help us offset those increased costs. So, I thank you for your time on this. We are here to answer any questions, and we respectfully request your favorable consideration of this request. We are here to answer any questions and we respectfully request your favorable consideration of this request. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's see. Kind of got a mess here as far as people signing up here. So speaking for the buffer, well, for item one, I'll show you Cheryl Ferrera.
My name is Cheryl Ferrera. I live at 32 Wagner Road in Pecosa. And I'm gonna speak to the issue of buffers and make the point that buffers are essential.
Wait one, wait one second.
I think I'm number three, four, five, but is?
You're, I'm showing one, three, and four.
Okay, that's okay.
All right, so.
Is that okay?
Now, what I'd rather wait is till we get to buffers. We're not talking about buffers quite yet.
Okay, sure.
All right. All right. Agenda item three. Buffer mod area one. Is, Bob, is that your desire to speak to this or buffer mods?
It was the buffer mod that I was.
Okay. Very confusing here. Buffer mod three, buffer mod four, four, and, so I don't have any speakers. So is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak on this particular subject? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for consideration by council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution approving a buffer amendment for the legacy of Pecosa Plan Development. Pecosa Tax Map Parcels numbers, and there are 18 of them, I won't bother to go through all 18, zone plan development, mixed use, P U D M U.
And is that as amended to?
As amended to reflect, after, prior to the 120th single-family building permit, as proper by the developer.
Okay? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made, second, that we approve this modification. Comments of council, questions?
Just wanted to thank the developer for changing that. I would've been willing to go to the 140th unit, but, so, yeah, and that was one of my questions I was gonna ask tonight was, since he had mentioned that at the planning commission. So, yeah, just thanks for doing that and putting it and keeping it in phase one. Just so people understand at home, it will be in phase one now.
And I would also like to thank you for making that change to the proper, because I, too, was one of the people who had some concerns as to whether or not the amenities would be realized for the people who bought homes in the first phase. Thank you.
Anything else? Evie, please.
Certainly. Councilman Canela.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven, zero.
Okay. The second public hearing is a request for a rezoning amendment to approve townhome elevations that were not submitted with the original set of approved elevations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Can you straighten us up on elevations?
Yes, yes, these are actually drawings, renderings of the building. We saw a lot of pictures today in the work session and included in your packet. That pretty much contains what the applicant is proposing in terms of offering variety. I'll take any questions or?
Just to make it clear, there still will be H.H. Hunt. And most of these questions I'm asking, I already know the answer to, I'm asking more for people listening at home. There will still be H.H. Hunt.
There will be.
Builder, will still be building in the development, correct?
That's my understanding. Now, again, that might be a good question for the applicant, but yes.
So I'll open the public hearing on this particular subject and I'll ask the applicant to address council on that. Not just the question, but on your?
Of course. Thank you, Mayor Hunt, members of council. Again, Lamont Myers, manager of Big Woods Development Company. Ms. Andrews, to answer your question, the original elevation was still one that we want to have in there. We have not signed contracts with any builders at this point. We have been talking to a number of them. We feel like we do need flexibility to allow a wider range of townhome models than were presented. That doesn't mean necessarily that Ryan will be in the project, that Hunt will be in the project, but these elevations will be prototypical, and they will be, and under the ordinance, have to be in substantial conformance with those elevations. So at that point, the director of community development, Mr. Horton, would review any plans that came in, any elevations that came in, and determine whether or not they are in substantial conformance with the elevations that were submitted. There was only one submitted originally, and we felt like there just, there needed to be more variety. We're trying to appeal to as many potential buyers as possible. We're trying to make this as available to as many different homeowners. So that really is what was our emphasis for this. I think that I've pretty much covered all that, really. I mean, we just want to, again, by having this, give more opportunity to more people and also provide a little more flexibility with our builders. So we can't tell you tonight, these will be here, these will be here, this will be this builder, this will be that builder. We're still working through that. But we did want to have a wider variety of townhome models, because we feel that we want to appeal to as many people as possible in this community. And we're available to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question about that?
Okay.
Is there any kind of indication as to whether or not there will be types of homes of both types in the development? And I say that because when this was first presented, the H.H. Hunt designs were the only ones shown.
Okay?
And then when we got the new designs, at least appearance-wise, they seemed to be not quite the H.H. Hunt's designs, and it had different colored lipstick on it.
Well, they're a little, they are a little different, Mr. Southall, you're correct. And actually, when the original application was made, there were some of the composer, there was a model of the composer series that was included, but somehow that got dropped out, and we can't figure out where that got lost along the way. So the composer series, which is a Ryan product, was our original intent. We were, have always intended to have more than just one type, but again, that somehow fell out of the package, so we're trying to rectify that as well. But, you know, we do want to have, we do, we need a mix of front loads and rear loads. We like a mix of three stories and two stories. Not everybody wants to climb that many stairs, so we're trying again. And we will do it in such a way that there'll be symmetry to the project. We just can't say, this will be here and this will be there. Did that, did that answer your question, Mr. Southall?
It did. I was trying to get an idea of what it was gonna look like, and that's difficult at this stage.
But I.
I don't have any speakers signed up for this item. Does anybody want to address this item?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution approving.
So let me close the public hearing if you don't mind. Let me close the public hearing if you don't mind. All right, so I don't see any speakers on this, so, all right, I'll close the public hearing now, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I move that we approve a resolution approving, adopt a resolution approving a rezoning amendment for the legacy of Pecosa with the 18 parcels mentioned in the proposal plan development.
Second. And motion made, second, that we approve this rezoning amendment. Questions or comments of council?
Yes, I have just a comment. I had some citizens mention to me that they were just concerned about Ryan home being, Ryan homes being maybe a lower-quality builder. And I don't have an issue with the request, but, you know, I do think that we just, I just want to talk now, because I know a lot of people are watching this as opposed to the planning commission meeting, and we were kind of short on time. But I do think it's important, as the developer said, to have different price points. Because there are, you know, young families that want to stay in this community. And, you know, I'm not a builder, whether Ryan quality homes are less quality than H.H. Hunt or another builder, that may be the case, but for some families, that's what they can afford. You know, they have to go with lower price, which sometimes, you know, you get what you pay for. You may have a little bit lower quality than a different builder, but doesn't mean it's substandard by any means, for sure. And, I mean, I've lived in a Ryan home. I like Ryan homes. I don't have any issues with them. I'm just bringing up what some citizens had said. And so I think it's important to have different price points in a community. So I, I think it's, that's a good thing. What the developer's doing is not having all H.H. Hunt's homes, which may be higher-priced.
The other panelists? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Manager Wheeler, could you remind us, please, the planning commission's guidance on this topic?
Yes, sir. The planning commission recommended this particular rezoning amendment by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
Anything else, members of council? Now, we have a motion made, and, Evie, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Canela.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six, zero. I'm sorry, seven, zero.
All right, thank you. Next item is a request for a buffer modification to area one on the submitted legacy Pecosa master plan to reduce the 40-foot buffer to 10 feet, which may be included in the recorded lots. So it'll be owned by, it'll be within the landowner's lot, but which will remain undisturbed. Wally?
Thank you. Don't really have anything to add to the work session. I would put out the planning commission, we have, we want to recommend. Question? I do have a question, Wally. When, it says which shall remain undisturbed. How does the city enforce that it remains undisturbed? That a shed doesn't get built there or that trees don't get cut down or? Do we have any enforcement of that? I, in the way that we would enforce it, we would not allow, especially, we would not issue a zoning or a building, some kind of buildings. So it's probably not needed, but, but we would not issue that. You know, as far as the development is concerned, I mean, that would be an enforcement from the homeowners association, we don't get involved with that. So, somebody clearly has treaties that will not necessarily be, not enforce that. But we would enforce it by virtue of not issuing a zoning. Okay.
Could I ask a question? Let me clarify what you just said, make sure I understand it. During the construction process, we will have every ability to make sure that those areas are identified and not, yes. Your question, your response to Councilman's question was really in a post-development question, which is we would not issue any building permit or zoning permit for work back there.
Right, that's what mine was, mine was in reference to, once the development's done and it's now part of the homeowner's lot. If somebody builds a shed back there, right, unless their neighbor reports it, we don't, because we don't go around and enforce that. Right, right, obviously. Can you answer, because I didn't have a chance to ask during the planning commission, why were the 40-foot buffers included in the ordinance for this type of development? What, I mean, assuming there is a purpose, if the whole development had a 40-foot buffer, what was the purpose of that? I wasn't here in the office to grab it. I can guess, though, that we probably looked at some other secret ordinances, what some of their requirements were. Obviously, we were looking through the grants, it was all through the grants, it wasn't going to be from Pecosa. I don't have any huge contribution to the overall process of coming up with that. But I'm sure it has something to do with the children, other developments, but, yeah, certainly, I don't think. Which, which, again, you know, closes the, closes the park as well as. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions, Wally? Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Horton, just to restate what we discussed during the work session, the requirements for the buffers were a known requirement and were agreed to by the developer and by the city. That, I'm just confirming that my understanding is correct.
Could I respond to that?
Yeah, I think you should. Please do.
The language requiring the buffers was in the city ordinance as of this time of adopted. And I think that's an, that's an accurate statement.
Okay.
Beyond that, I think that that's the essential nugget in responding.
Yes, sir.
This was not a requirement that was adopted by city council after the legacy master plan was approved.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
All right. Let me open the public hearing and we'll ask for the developer to tell us why you're looking for this require, this buffer modification.
Again, Lamont Myers, the Big Woods Development Company. We come before you to seem to really to seek a few minor modifications to the buffer. And I really would like to, I'd like to take advantage and clarify how all this came to be. I think a number of, Ms. Andrews, she wants to answer, ask a number of really good questions during the work session. Or just maybe recount to you how sort of all this happened. We do that language with any ordinance, obviously. And in our executive summary, we never intended to have current buffers, because we didn't feel it was necessary. Majority of the, if you look at the project, and I'm going to focus how I can do this.
It's for, it's for us, sorry.
It is. I would just ask that you speak in the microphone, only because at the planning commission, anytime you didn't talk in the microphone, you couldn't hear anything you said.
Let me, let me hold, is this, can you hear this?
Yes. Just, just leave your mic there and bring the drawing up.
Well, I'd like to, I, I.
You really need to turn and talk to the mic, though.
But if you look, if you look at the master plan, this is the approved master plan. There are no buffers shown. In fact, in our, in our executive summary, to our application, which was dated, it relates 2015, we submitted with our original zoning application, it was stated, and I quote, "No buffers proposed along the undeveloped, really property that enjoys the community." Now, in the process of working with staff at that time to determine what modifications we needed to request, there were specific, there were a couple of specific areas that said you can't do a buffer unless you, unless it was modified via the overall requirements. And that was along, along developed properties. There are only two areas here where we enjoy a developed property. One is the back of the sink wall, right here. And the other is along with the tap, the counter. So our understanding at the time is that we would apply for those two buffer modifications and that the, that the master plan, that was, that was approved and wasn't approved by the council, would then be the documents, since the master plan never showed any buffers, that no buffers would be required. Now, as we get, then move into the final development plan stage. To that point, that when we got to the point of actually doing the hard, if we submitted phase one, we submitted a buffer, just like the other plan. Now, at this time, you have entirely new community development standard. They really had to look at just the written word. So, I mean, we understand it. We said, well, the written word says, you only have these two buffer modifications, therefore, we need them. That was not our understanding, but we said, with regard to phase one, we said, okay, let's find a way to make this happen. So we incorporated that 40-foot buffer in phase one, which would be along after the rock. Now, I would like to clarify one point, that is, I would actually refer to. We have one break in there in order to drain our stormwater. We have to be able to hit the stormwater from our pond into the outfall, which is actually, that can only go across the pond. And that never came up as an issue during our conversation or during our plan review process. So I just want to clarify that, so there's no question. So anyway, so at this point, we became aware, we said, okay, we can accommodate in phase one. And what we did was we designated that area of townhomes back up to that buffer and said, we can only build certain types of townhomes that are much, that are much shallower product. And there is enough shallow, shallow product that we can accommodate that within the footprint. However, when we started looking at phases two, in phase two, particularly, the property that enjoys, our, 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 Mr. White's property, we saw that that was going to be a real problem. Because, again, we had never. we saw that that was going to be a major problem because, again, we had never anticipated that. And we started looking at those, what that would do to us. And our latest plans in the day, we could lose as many as thirteen lots. We originally thought about, hey, this is not looking like we could lose. We're not going to get back to the two thirty-eight that we had originally, that we were approving. We're losing lots because we made some lots here, we're going to lose that drainage movement that was, that was missed. Our original idea there, that's going to cost us a few lots. Trying to basically get us back to as close as we're, we'll be able to approve for it, with the understanding that we're never going to really get now. But for, you know, lots of thirteen single-family lots, I mean, that's obviously a big deal for us, it's also a big deal for the city because that represents millions of dollars in tax revenue. So, you know, this is, you know, we're trying to do, you know, our only other alternative really would be to do smaller lots, smaller homes, do more emphasis on garage doors. We just don't think it's the look that you want and we want. So what we're doing is, is trying to find a middle ground here and say, understand how this happened, but it did happen, we have to know somehow to find a solution. So we discussed and we said, well, let's, let's make it a provision to save some trees along there, even though even with the awkward, we haven't as hard to do so, so we can't buy that a little. The purpose of buffers, we even talk about the purpose of buffers. The main reason the purpose of buffers is to shield unlike uses. Uh, maybe, excuse me, modification of it. We're talking about single-family lots backing up to later. So there really is no objectionable use there that really needs to be. So that's one issue. The other issue, just so you know, this, I'm going to, I'll kind of take this around. This shows you the wetlands, uh, permit, we have permitted wetland impacts. This shows you. Oh, sorry.
Either you hit the button or the batteries died, one or the other.
Check.
I don't know, I can't tell. I can hear you.
Then we hear this.
According to Scott, it's working.
This work, is this, can everyone hear me?
Yeah, there you go.
Ron Green, let's see, how about this, this, no, no?
Yeah.
Okay. What I'd like to do is just show you on this master plan that was approved, we've had the, the permitted wetland impact superimposed in red, as you can see them here, thank you, John. And as you can see, there are no wetlands anywhere along our buffer with Mr. White. In fact, the only wetlands we have anywhere south of Oxford Run is a little tiny dot right there. So all of these, so tonight, thank you, John, I think we heard a number of things during the Planning Commission, and I, and I'm sure you may hear some of these things this evening, that how the legacy, how this master plan, how these buffers will somehow change the scope of the project, even though we're just building to the master plan, that it would somehow contribute to or disturb more wetlands, that it might contribute to increased runoff, that it would require regulatory review, or review by the regulatory agencies. As you listen to these comments, I'd like you to please bear in mind a few things. The approved legacy master plan never showed a perimeter buffer. In fact, we had stated in our original application that none was proposed along undeveloped wooded property. As I mentioned, there are no existing wetlands in any of these areas in which we're requesting buffer modifications, and as such, there will be no impact or change to impacted wetlands. Furthermore, these modifications will not lead to any additional impacts outside of the project area. We have spoken with DEQ, and they understand that we are not changing the project scope, nor are we requesting any permit modifications. So really, we're talking about, talking about single-family lots that will back up to single-family lots, and, you know, so really, you're talking like uses. We will preserve ten feet of trees that otherwise we would not be required to. And so in summation, we're not here this evening, we're not seeking changes to the master plan, we're not seeking any changes in the allowable number of units. We're simply trying to build the best community possible that'll be a credit to the city while remaining financially feasible. So, again, we respectfully request your favorable consideration, and I and members of our team are here to answer any questions.
Most of the concerns that have been expressed to me in this one plus the next two are dealing with the impact on water quality. If you extend a road, or if you do a turnaround, or in this case, you just reduce the buffers, can you or your environmental person talk about the impact that this may or may not have on the water quality running into Oxford, running out into the river?
I'd like to call on Ryan Stevenson, if I may. Ryan is with AES Consulting Engineers, he is the project designer, and rather than me stand here and talk about something I am not as good at, let me ask Ryan, just please step forward and address that.
Hello, council members. Ryan Stevenson, AES Consulting Engineers, fifty-two forty-eight Old Town Road in Williamsburg. The question was specific to the T-turnaround. In that instance, the T-turnaround would be curb and gutter. Everything would be collected as far as stormwater and directed into the storm system that would go into a, an approved BMP, which would treat the, the impervious cover before releasing it.
Okay, on that one. And then these other buffer reductions that you're talking about, can you talk about that if we take, what, thirty feet of trees, I think you're asking for in this one case, and, and make it yard, does that have any effect?
There would be no increase in impervious in those areas you're talking about, and actually, I mean, ten feet of, of preserved trees provide more pollutant removal than forty feet of grass or tulips, in, in our opinion, and what we've seen. And, and I don't know, to speak on the other items, you know, we're, we're attenuating the one, two, and ten-year storms to below pre-development levels. We're containing the hundred-year storm in our BMPs with a freeboard and, and an emergency spillway to protect the community. The impervious cover is, is actually, we've designed for a little bit more impervious cover than is required on the lots. We've assumed more than, than what is actually shown, just knowing how development goes and what people do in their yards. So we always design for a little extra just to be safe, you know, we've got to put our seal on these plans. The BMPs, as shown on the master plan, have actually gotten bigger since the master plan. They were a little bit undersized, and once we got into the real design, working with city staff, we've had to upsize those to meet city and state requirements. And the apartments, we've added a BMP to account for the apartments. We're working with the city right now to update our plans to account for that. And the commercial will also be picked up with storm pipe and directed to stormwater management facilities to treat that impervious as well.
And, and the question, all that will be done as a part of Phase One?
Yes, sir.
And changing the proper from forty feet to ten feet doesn't change the size of the lots. It just allows it to be more buildable so you could put on a, a bigger or nicer property for the single homes, but you still retain a ten-foot swath of trees back behind the lots.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I get several speakers that want to talk about this item, and first one is Randy Tresser.
Am I using this thing? Okay. Let me just respond to that comment. There's no increase in impervious surface. But when you take down the trees, but you, you remove all the trees, you remove the absorptive capacity of trees. You know, so you remove some of that ability for storm, to take up, to take up stormwater. I mean, that doesn't take a rocket science to know that a flat piece of grass versus a bunch of trees on, uh, and shrubs and that kind of stuff on land is going to have more of absorptive capacity. So, why you would look at that, I, I don't, that way, I just don't, I don't understand that.
Well, let me, let me try and help you with that, because I think this was Councilman Canela's point during the work session, just so that, because the, the issue here is that the developer has proffered to leave ten feet undisturbed, whereas with the forty feet, he does not have to leave it undisturbed. And therefore, the engineer was addressing, if you cleared forty feet, ten feet would be more benef, ten feet of wooded would be more beneficial than forty feet of clear.
That's an opinion. That's an opinion.
Okay, but that's what he was stating.
So my opinion is, you'd be better off taking your chances, keeping your forty-foot buffer as opposed, because what's going to survive on the ten-foot buffer that they're going to leave you? And I've had this discussion with Lee Fenenskold, that you might as well take your chances and keep the forty-foot buffer. And, you know, if they're, if, you know, if the decent thing to do would be to leave the trees on the forty-foot buffer as well. But I just, you know, I think that you should take your chances and maintain the forty-foot buffer. I think we'd have a better chance of maintaining some absorptive capacity with stormwater runoff. And as far as, you know, when we had this process and we had the public hearing, you know, there were just hours and hours of discussion of a PUD, and we've got this new way of designing thing, and this is a flexible system of housing. But the bottom line is that it was a flexible system of housing, and, because the houses are crowded real close together. They're not like our homes where we have these huge yards, and, you know, our runoff is captured there. So the whole point of the perimeter buffer, it wa, it was a trade-off for everything else that they're getting. So they're already getting relief by being designated this PUD and MU. So I, I can't see how you, as a developer, would go through this public hearing, read the, read the ordinances, and not understand that, you know, there's going to be a requirement for all of these, for all of this relief that you're already getting, and the requirement is, is a perimeter buffer. And so if you don't have that, what do you have? I mean, you have a traditional system. I mean, I wasn't privy to seeing his map here, but where is it left? I mean, where is the perimeter buffer? I mean, you got this in two thousand and fifteen, you have this that they're asking for now, that, well, they gave that back because I'm thinking, they're thinking it's pretty unreasonable, right? Then they, then you got this, which they got, so, and now they're requesting these two areas, so where, where is there a perimeter buffer? I, I guess it's right there, a little swath there. So what you have is not, I mean, is not a PUD or an MU, because it's not meeting the requirements in your ordinances. So that's all I'll say for right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bob Weston?
Now, there is a question about, in fact, there's a landscape versus undeveloped woods. Without having some idea of the amount of trees within the forty and ten-foot area, it'd be hard to ask you to do a trade-off. And I haven't heard about anybody who would serve it, how many trees would be left within ten-foot buffer on their lots if you go to landscape? And if it's landscape, I don't think you're talking about on the grass, you're talking about some type of landscape with bushes and trees. And we don't know, at least I don't know what the absorption characteristics are of one versus the other. And then the last consideration was one that Janet brought up regarding the original intent of the buffers. And other than the environmental, there also was consideration in the planning committee about what happens on the other side of the line. Right now, it's undeveloped woods, but we don't know what's going to occur in the future. Is it commercial, is it going to be left with indefinitely, or is it going to be homes? And so there's, um, shield review or the impact on homeowners looking at the thoughts of buffer that is bushes, low trees, bushes, ten-g trees, which I think would provide very little visual of a sound buffer from a commercial level. So I think some of the thing is, is lacking information for the, for the. Trade-off between these two.
Yep, thank you. All right, I have Cheryl Ferrera. You would get you back up here.
I don't think this works, but. Anyway, I live at thirty-two Wagner Road in Pecosin, and I just want to speak to buffers in general, that they are essential. This development will likely have a negative impact on water quality due to the tremendous amount of impervious surface that it will create and the close proximity to our waterways. This is the most important reason why we need perimeter buffers and why the ordinance requires it. That it's to reduce runoff and pollutants running into the Chesapeake Bay. A stormwater management system is not enough. Buffers and stormwater management systems work together to prevent pollutants from getting into the bay. Poor water quality has a negative impact on our economics and our ecology that our waterways provide. For this reason, I request that you deny the developer's request for buffer reductions for this development. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, I'm going to get one more speaker on this, and that's Conway Shields.
Could you be just a little bit louder, thank you?
Excuse me, I'm, I keep thinking I'm doing this. Okay, I'm sorry about that. Again, Conway Shield, I'm an attorney, Lamont's already introduced me as part of his team. I'm with the law firm of Jones, Black &amp; Wilson Kelly in New Haven News, and I just want to make a couple of points. First of all, the ten-foot undisturbed area you talked about and some of the concerns about that, that can be platted as undisturbed on the flat, it can also... about that, that can be platted as undisturbed on the flat, it can also be arranged through covenants as a ten-foot undisturbed area through restrictive covenants. We will be happy to do that. It's the intent that that remain undisturbed throughout. I assume you know this, but I'm not sure because I've dealt with this thing for a couple of years along with Lamont, but 25% of the property is going to remain wooded in this project overall. The entire project will remain 25% wooded. As far as the negative impact on water quality, I believe that's been discussed by Ryan Stevenson far better than I can present it. I think, given what we've done, given the size of the BMA that's been put on this, the ponds have been put there, that the water quality is not going to suffer, and there's certainly no evidence it's going to suffer. And Ryan, who is obviously a licensed engineer, has indicated to you through his assurance that it's not going to be. So with that, I'll make those comments. If they think further, please, please ask.
Is there someone else that wants to speak?
It's been a while. My name, you have to talk. This one, okay. My name's Janice Powell. I live at 306 Powhatan Drive here in Pecosin. I want to speak to planning, mostly. A plan, a development plan, a master plan, all the things that we talked about when we were going through the Walmart situation. Plans are laid out so that we have guidelines to follow. And time and circumstances and the economy can sometimes change those things. But the plan for this particular area, and the plan that was originally approved by the 2015 City Council, did not allow for these buffers to go away. There's a reason why they exist. That hasn't changed. I'm personally particularly worried about the buffers being reduced on Victory Boulevard. Victory is our gateway to the city, it's the entrance to our city. The buffer, the thought of, you know, three-story, four-story buildings is very disturbing, and I think it's something that everyone should probably really visualize, you know, a four-story or a three-story apartment and some guy's laundry hanging off the balcony as you're driving into town. That's my visual. It might not be a real one, but it's mine. But I'd like to bring this to the most common sense thing, all right? I'm a small business owner. I, I love the idea of this development coming. I, I believe in it. We may eventually retire there, who knows? It's a good development, but it needs to follow what it was supposed to follow from the first place. I'm a small business owner, I'm an interior decorator by trade. People hire me all the time when they're building a house. They give me a set of blueprints. They say, okay, we want you to get the furniture and all the things that are going to fit inside this house. I can't go back to them after I've bought a whole bunch of furniture and I've, now I've got too much, and say, okay, we need to talk to the builder, the house wasn't built big enough. Or we have to go back to the architect and redesign it so we can make this room 20 feet larger. It doesn't work that way for everyone else that has to follow the plans and follow the rules and follow the guidelines. We're talking about our stormwater management, and we're talking about a favorable amendment to a pretty big development without giving it the true thought of what it's really going to do to impact our visual environment and our actual stormwater and environmental environment. And I just think you really need to give that a lot of thought, because this is going to be it. This is our gateway project. We lost the one at White House Cove. Let's make sure we do this one right. Let's do it right. That's all.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Seeing no other speakers and nobody else has signed up, I'll close the public hearing unless for consideration by council.
Mr. Mayor, if I could address this one second.
Can we get, can we go ahead and just get a motion on the floor?
Sure.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution approving a buffer modification for the legacy application.
Second.
Okay, motion made, and second, and we approve the buffer modification. All right, now questions and comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And you mentioned this briefly a couple of minutes ago. I just want to make it clear, obviously, for myself and, you know, those at home and those interested. The only guarantee that there are any trees on this buffer that borders Mr. White's property is if we approve this. There's no guarantee at fault of whom, I can't speculate, there, there are any trees in the buffer area if we deny it. And I'm not making assumptions about the developer. But what you could do, if we denied this, is clear-cut that to the edge of the buffer and plant nothing but grass, because we don't define, in my opinion, and Wayne, or Mr. Manager, if you crack me, please, if I misspeak, we don't define landscaped as anything. We don't say it's trees or shrubs, and like I talked about during our work session, it might be one row of tulips, and you come back and say, define landscaped, because there it is. So the, in my opinion, approving this and for, to ensure there's absorbent, I guess, ability, is to approve this buffer, this, this, the ten-foot, because it guarantees those undisturbed trees will still be there. So I just wanted to clarify my position and how this has kind of evolved. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Other counsel?
Can I just ask a question? I'm not a developer, my in-laws are, so, but would it make financial sense if there's a forty-foot buffer required on the edge for a developer to pay to tear down forty-foot of trees that you didn't have to, and then pay a landscaper to come in and plant tulips or azaleas? Would that make sense for you to do that? As a developer?
That's, you're, you're kind of way out on the limb here. So it's a public hearing, they can address us. If they'd like to address your question, they can. If they don't want to, they don't have to.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you want to address it or no? Okay, well, then I'll just say that as a businessperson, it would not make sense to me if I was developing a piece of property to tear down forty, forty feet of trees, pay somebody to tear that down and have that expense, and then have the additional expense of having a landscaper come in and plant bushes or tulips. I also don't think just because a prior council allowed the removal of buffers in other areas that that's a reason to justify doing it now. In fact, I think that's probably a reason to definitely not do it now. I think, you know, I'm sorry about the misunderstanding or that, you know, the ordinance, the ordinance seems very clear to me. You know, I'm sorry that there was a misunderstanding that it didn't apply to certain areas. It doesn't say that in the ordinance. But I'm also not a proponent of allowing things to be changed and then setting a precedent for that to be removed somewhere else. I also have to consider the fact that the adjoining property owner requested that we not allow those buffer reductions. That weighs heavily on me. And the citizens who have spoken to me, it hasn't been about water quality, it's been more about, concern about flooding and leaving those trees there, you know, would help prevent flooding, so.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, Evie, please.
Councilman Hux?
No.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
I'm sorry?
Aye.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
No.
Councilman Canelo?
Aye.
Mayor Hunt? Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote five to two.
Next, next item is a request for buffer modification to Area Three on the submitted legacy master plan to reduce the forty-foot perimeter buffer in order to provide room for development of the, well, as the required parking to serve this commercial space.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Can you hear me? It's, it's working? Okay, good, good. All right, well, that's a good thing. I'm not going to add too much to what I said at the work session in regard to buffer number three, except to say that the planning commission did unanimously recommend approval of this modification for the commercial area.
I just want to ask, is the commercial area, how, how many, is it said forty, forty square feet of commercial? That seems very small to me. Forty thousand square feet? Okay. So it's twenty thousand, twenty thousand on each side?
Thank you, Mayor Hunt, members of council. I'll be very, very brief on this. I just, again, call your attention to the, the approved master plan, as you can see. Sorry. Yeah, there we go. But if you can see, there clearly was never a buffer anticipated in this area. This is zoned R and D, it's a commercial piece that fronts Victory Boulevard, this is commercial here. And if, if there were a forty-foot buffer imposed, it's simply, we could not build the commercial the way it's designed. We would lose a good deal of our required parking, it would also dramatically change the visual look, the symmetry coming into the project. If there was, you know, ever a clear example of what was, you know, never anticipated a buffer, you know, this would be an area that would be it. So I don't really have much to add. I think Mr. Horton did an excellent job of, of summing it up. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I would again respectfully request your favorable consideration.
All right. Then we have a speaker, Randy, you want to go talk about this one?
Randy.
This, these buffer, granting of these buffers, in my view, Mr. Freeman, are, it's, I think is an abuse of the PUD MU system. I think it's a gaming of the system. I think, Mr. Canelo, you are wrong, that we are, we are going to suffer from this. So I think he's gaming the system, and I think that, Mr. Freeman, you've made a comment to me before when we met, that you said we, we've never done this before, we've made a lot of mistakes. Well, it appears that you are continuing to make those mistakes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve a resolution for the buffer modification in Area Three as submitted.
Second.
This is the one, actually, I've struggled with the most, because I think the commercial area is probably the only section of the development that's going to bring us a net gain in revenue. I mean, obviously, we're going to get taxpayer revenue, but we're also going to have to put out services for all those people that live there as well. So there's, I do, I mean, honestly, have gone back and forth and back and forth on this one. You know, I'd rather see the buffer kept in and commercial on the bottom level of the apartments. But even up to this minute, I'm just, I'm disappointed that we're moving, removing more buffers, that weighs in on it now, too. I thought I had made up my mind, but, so.
Okay, is there a motion? Oh, we've already got a motion made, sorry.
Vice Mayor Freeman? Councilwoman Andrews?
No.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Canelo?
Aye.
Councilman Hux?
No.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Mayor Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to two.
Okay, very well. Last item is a request for buffer modification to Area Four on the submitted legacy master plan to reduce the forty-foot perimeter buffer to five feet in order to provide a T turnaround at the terminus of Street A, as shown on the master plan. The five-foot buffer would be maintained as grass. Okay?
Thank you. I'm not going to add too much of what I said in the work session, except to say that on this particular request, the planning commission did vote five to one to recommend denial of this particular request.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Sure.
I think there's some confusion, or I'm confused, I guess. So on number three, the motion was to approve it, correct?
Yeah.
And we voted to approve that, five to two. Mr. Hux and I were the only one that said no. So we, we approved that.
Correct, right.
Oh, okay, I thought you said we denied it.
Oh, that was planning commission.
Planning commission.
Oh, yeah, okay, sorry, I'm.
Wally, come back up real quick. Tell us why the buffer modification for Area Four, why that became an item from the staff's perspective.
Well, the, the planning commission meeting, several things were pointed out that were concerns. One is that losing one or two townhome lots was just not deemed by the planning commission to be too severe a penalty for, you know, putting in exchange for encroachment into the mountain. The other was, there was a lot of discussion over the requirement for the turnaround. One of our planning commission members did not like the idea that we required that. And in fact, before this meeting, I actually met with the city engineer and fire chief in regard to that. And it is, it's a combination of requirements. But, but ultimately, you know, it rests on the fact that it was shown on the master plan. But it is needed, as I pointed out in the work session, it is needed for the provision of emergency services.
Okay.
There was some concern over the spillover, and I believe the engineer for AES might have said something earlier tonight about curbing gutter and redirecting the flow. That was a concern. But ultimately, I really think it just came down to the, the fact that the planning commission didn't think one or two lots was worth the encroachment into the buffer.
Okay. So it was shown on the original plan. We, the, you being the staff, and Randy, I guess this is really because you've got to talk to, and I see the chief over there, too. It's because it's a public safety requirement?
Let me, let me see if I can answer your original question, and I'll work into this. The, the original master plan showed a turnaround at the end of Street A. As you recall from Mr. Meyer's earlier comments, when they put their conceptual plan together, there were no buffers shown there. During the site plan process for Phase One, they ran into the challenge of putting that turnaround there and maintaining the buffer. So the, the version of, the first version, and I believe that also the current version of the proposed site plan, showed no turnaround there, honoring the forty-foot buffer, but not doing that. And the, and the developer's request, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth at all, Mr. Meyer, so if I get it wrong, I expect you to stand up and say, but the alternative is to either have a turnaround that is part of this modification, have a turnaround that is, honors the forty-foot buffer, and therefore may require them to lose one or two lots as per their letter of application, or not to have a turnaround. And it is our practice to have a turnaround so that we can get emergency vehicles in and out. That's, and, and that is, that is standard with us. We think the turnaround is important, whether it is within the buffer or without, inside or outside with the modification is really your decision, but from a public safety standpoint, we think that a turnaround is important for public safety.
Okay, thank you. All right, thanks. Hi, is the applicant opening the public hearing?
Yeah, I'm seven, I'm seven, I'm seven, I'm seven, I'm seven, I'm seven, I'm seven. This did come to the light during our Phase One, we did, we said at the time, we agreed to incorporate that forty-foot buffer. I do want to point out, I hear it's important, you know, when you see the site plan, you don't have.
Lamont, can you pick up the microphone, please?
Come on, can you pick up the microphone, please?
For keeping it getting up, sorry. I think it's important to point out that, you know, whether the T turnaround is in the buffer or not, there will be a need to cross the buffer with a stormwater outfall, because we have to get stormwater from our pond into the discharge point in Oxford Run. So, that never came up as a question during site plan review, but it was stated, you know, earlier during the work session that that would be the only break in the buffer. I just want to clarify that as a point of, you know, just a point of accuracy, that we do have to have the ability to get our stormwater out. Other than that, I think everything has really been said. I think Ryan did an excellent job of explaining. The only other point perhaps to make is that in our buffer modification request, we requested that it be reduced down to five feet, but in addition to that, that would be five feet from our property line. There's about fifteen feet from our property line on city property to the top of Oxford Run. So, we would not be five feet from the ditch. We would be more like twenty feet from the ditch. Five of that would be on our property, fifteen would be on city property. So, I do, and again, with everything being directed back into our drainage system. So, I just wanted to make those points of clarification, and again, we're still available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You have more questions?
Yeah. Approximately, how wide is that road, and it's going thirty-five feet into the buffer? And the width is about, just approximately?
Well, we may not need to go, Mr. Freeman, all the way, you know, thirty-five feet. We just, that was, we may need to give ourselves room. You have to have a radius. You need about, what do you, in width, twenty?
You want your engineer to just come up and address it?
Yeah, good idea.
He probably did the calculation.
He can certainly do a better job at it, as you can see, than I can, so, Ryan.
Do I need to introduce myself again, or, okay. So, at least twenty-foot wide, but we would work with the fire department if they needed it to be, you know, up to twenty-five, we've seen, but at least twenty feet wide. And then, and then I think it was close to a hundred feet in the total for the turnaround in both directions.
And it would be nothing there except road.
Correct.
There would be nothing on either side of it.
Yeah, just curb, curb and gutter to pick up, yeah, correct. Yes, sir.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, let's see, I had a couple signups for this. Randy, trust trail.
I already know how that's going to go, so, and I don't mind it.
Okay. Bob Weston.
I'm concerned about this modification, potential structural impact. One is it's an obvious increase in... Mostly I'm concerned about its proximity to Oxford Run. It's the only part of the entire buffer along Oxford Run where we have road structure on that course of Oxford Run. Remember, this is a turnaround, which can have considerable load there, fire trucks, fire trucks, and, you know, the structure, crash trucks going through. So, it does sound good, they say it's twenty feet. Actually, that is Oxford Run. I've heard whether or not this is the engineering analysis to find out that you're having many vehicles that close to the edge of it, even if you have a curb and gutter system that, stormwater can, storm vehicles under there, it's going to need to be some strength that, of the, perhaps, on the edge of Oxford Run to be... Environmental concerns would cause me to say, you should do this. Plus, I don't think it's the responsibility of city council to have to correct, add the planning and things that they didn't expect by the... Issue here, it's only one of the council. I think that's, we have rather than the city being expected every time a developer says they didn't perceive us, that the city gives way.
Okay, thank you. See, no other speakers signed up. Anybody else have anything on that? Okay. Okay, I'll close the public hearing and ask for consideration by council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution approving of buffer modification to Area Number Four as submitted.
Suck. A motion made and seconded, we approve this buffer modification. Comments of, questions or comments of council?
I just wanted to say that in my votes tonight, I took into consideration what the planning commission did. I went to those meetings. I think they took time and consideration and research in their decisions based on their comments. So, that weighs in on my decision, along with citizen comments, and, and, you know, as I said in the, in the work session, I think the ordinance is clear. I don't think it's my job as a city council person to fix a business error that was made, that that's just a cost of doing business. And so, I think the T turnaround, we, obviously, it's very important. We have to have that, but I don't think we, the city, should have to give up something. I think if the developer has to give up one to two units, that's their cost of doing business for not designing the plan per our ordinance.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to restate what we had said during the work session, the only impact on the buffer will be immediately in way of this T turnaround.
Right. The rest of the forty-foot buffer would maintain, be maintained intact.
Correct, thank you.
Correct. All right. So, we have, anybody else? We have a motion made and seconded? No other comments? Evie, please.
Excuse me, Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
No.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
No.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to two.
Okay, thank you very much. That is it for public hearings this evening. And next item on the agenda is, under new business, a resolution canceling the second meetings of November and December. Housekeeping item.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution canceling the second meeting of the months of November and December.
Suck. Motion made and seconded, we approve that resolution and cancel those two meetings unless something comes up, and we'll call a special one. Questions or comments? Evie, please.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven, zero.
Randy, comments of city manager?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Okay. All right, council directives. Bud, we'll start with you this evening.
My voice is gone tonight, so I'm going to be quiet, thank you.
I was counting on you.
Councilwoman Andrews.
You always make good comments. I can normally just say ditto. So, I just want to say thank you to your service for all our veterans here on council and everywhere else. Happy Veterans Day yesterday. And I just wanted to say that I am not, while I voted no on several of these, I'm not anti-development. I think this is going to be a great development. Like I said, my in-laws are developers in Northern Virginia. I look forward to it, you know, and I already stated the reasons that I voted no, but, so I just wanted to say that as well.
All right, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yes, I'd just like to publicly thank the American Legion for the Veterans Day ceremony that they put on yesterday. It was a fairly large community affair. We had the TAO ROTC students, our local Boy Scouts, children, American Revolution, and several of our community members participating. So, I think the Legion did a very good job, again, I'll say.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilman Hux.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Four years ago, when the legacy development was approved, I was a school board member, and I sat right here in this very seat, I believe, and expressed my appreciation to council for approval. I certainly support the development. I think it'll be a positive feature in this city, and appreciate the efforts to all involved. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Green.
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilman Canelo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I too, just piggyback on what other members have said. I'm still and have been supportive of the development, and I'm, you know, supportive of everything we have to take into consideration. You know, and I wasn't on council when this was approved, but this has certainly been the first process and project of this extent we've dealt with in the city as a, as a staff or as a council. And, you know, things like this unfortunately happen, but I can't speak for what happened when it was approved, but I can address what we've been tasked to do now. And I don't take votes by chance. I don't, I don't hope that a developer or a citizen or anybody will do anything by chance, but I will vote on and approve something that bans them to something we've required. And that's why I voted the way I did tonight, especially on the buffer modification that borders Mr. White's property. And I would ask staff with the consensus of council to really look at the areas and our ordinances, and I'm sure you're aware of some, where language is not explicitly cleared and have terms that we think are so understandable, such as landscaped, need to be defined, because, quite frankly, because of the language in our ordinance, we found ourselves in this possession. And that's impacted my decision-making processes, is the language there, because I pointed out what the developer could have done had we denied this.
Well, let me, let me take your, your comments a step further. I would assume from this exercise this evening that we, the council, believe that there's some weaknesses in our ordinance, and that we should remand those weaknesses in our ordinance back to the planning commission, specifically dealing with buffers, landscaping, and all those sorts of things. So, I would ask, I see a consensus, I see a lot of head nods, so we're going to direct that. And I would ask council to give their concerns about that ordinance to Randy, so they can go back to planning commission, in case there's another PUD ordinance in the future. Okay? All right. Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. That'd be, I think, when Randy spoke, he forgot that we were going to get a brief this evening from Graham on the movement of Tom Hunt's store.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Apologize for that, members of council.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, just wanted to give everybody an update, especially those at home that may not be aware of the situation with Tom Hunt's store. As everyone knows, we've been in the works and process, a long process, to move Tom Hunt's store to the museum property for a number of years, and we finally got to the point where we're ready to move the store. The contractor, if anybody has seen the building, it's up, it's on wheels, it's ready to roll. We have been trying to avoid all potential conflicts in the city that this is going to create, but, and having said that, there's conflicts every day. The conflicts be during the weekday with people going to work, in schools, and buses, and so forth, on weekends with parks and rec activities, and youth football, and so forth like that. The contractor requires a six-hour window to move the store from the present location of, on, across the intersection of Odd Road and the Coateson Avenue to the museum property. So, what we have done is we, we plan with the contractor to start that move at sunrise on Sunday, November the seventeenth. We hope very much that that store will be down the road and onto museum property within several hours. They're hoping that it can be done in, say, four hours, which would get it off the road before folks are going to eleven o'clock church services. We will have signage, we will have all kinds of information going out. We've messaged this already on all our social media. We've contacted all the churches in the city to let their congregations know about it. And so, that's where we're at with this potential move on Sunday the seventeenth. I will add, the weather this weekend is of concern. There's a potential for a coastal storm, which, in my thoughts, will delay this move to another weekend, at which time we will try to schedule it on a different day, if possible, when there's less activities planned rather than this Saturday, but the following weekend. And so, we, you know, we're mindful of the weather. We'll have information, and we will message that out as soon as we have a final commitment, whether we're going to do the move or not this weekend.
You didn't ask the speaker.
I know.
You just told me that he was going to do...
I know. Well, he missed one thing. We're going to use our Code Red system in a different way, not as an emergency, but as a communication. So, as soon as we've got a confirmation that it's a go-no-go for this weekend, we'll do a Code Red message out on Thursday. If there is a determination that because of whether we're not going to do it, we won't do one, we'll do it several days before we, before our new date. So, in addition to signs and our website and our social media and the church notifications, which we'll do again if we need to pass it off, we'll also use that system to let people know when we've got a clear path a few days out.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. I don't have any further comments, so, go ahead.
Well, I'm assuming that since I go to the early service at Tabernacle, y'all have given me special dispensation to miss that Sunday morning.
I don't think the store comes, I don't think the store goes by your house. You'd be able to get there, you might just have to walk.
It goes down the road that I take to get to Tabernacle.
You might just have to walk that day. I'm sure you'll figure it out. Actually, probably most of us will be seeing if it holds together. All right. Motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Suck. Okay, Evie, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Canelo.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven, zero.
Very good, and we are adjourned.